Yeah, 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 we're going to go. Yeah.
Good evening. We'll go ahead and call the Burlington City Council September 17th, 2013 meeting to order. Like to take this opportunity to welcome you here tonight and hopefully you will return. We also would like to remind you to turn off all electronic devices at this time. Calling Councilmember Jim Butler for tonight's invocation.
Let's pray. Dear Father, we thank you once again for the opportunity to come before you this evening. Father, we're so very thankful for our many blessings and the many positive things that we're having that are going on currently within our city. Lord, just tonight, we're mindful of the tragedy in the DC area and, Father, we ask that your comfort be with those families that have lost loved ones. Father, please lead, guide, and direct this council as we conduct the business of the city of Burlington and bless those involved in our work and those that prepare the documents for us. And thank you for all you do, in your name we pray. Amen.
This time, we'd also like to welcome some special guests, Eric Lippert and Andrew McGee, Connor Wright, all are Troop 39 Macedonia Lutheran Church, and they're working on their communications badge. And if you'd like to stand, feel free to do so and introduce yourself.
I'm Connor Wright.
I'm Andrew McGee.
I'm Eric Lippert.
Parents here with you? Just one. Welcome. Welcome. Thank you, guys, for being here. This time, we'll call on our city clerk, Renee Ward, for the code of ethics. Ms. Ward.
As members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest and manage their reports. At this time, I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
Next item on the agenda's approval of the minute, September 3rd, 2013, City Council meeting.
Mayor, if I could address a matter that's been brought to my attention today by the manager as well as Councilman Bowles, there may have been some confusion from that meeting on September 3, 2013. During the City Council comments, I had brought up the subject matter of having the City Council entertain rezoning the corner lot on the corner of University and Highway 70 at the same time and have an unnecessary public hearing at the same time that we were entertaining the matter that Mr. Lawson Brown was already representing the property owner on the conditional commercial rezoning. It has been brought to my attention. What I think, what I thought we started out was, I was trying to say, let's have it all zone conditional zoning with the same conditions and restrictions that Mr. Brown was proposing for his property there. When Mr. Bateman brought it to my attention that that would require the petition of the property owner, but the City Council could on its own initiative rezone the property. Oh, and I think I had commented that my purpose was to try to avoid having a gas station put in that area, and that's what my request was, not for the whole property. Mr. Brown's petitioner's request be altered in any way, but just the property on the corner be considered for purposes of O&amp;I. O&amp;I, of course, does not by right have the right for somebody to put a gas station in. So if there was any confusion there, I'd want to make sure the minutes reflect that that's what my intent was. I think I talked with each one of you otherwise, and I think it was clear.
Let that be reflected in the minutes, please. Okay?
Otherwise, move to approve the minutes from September 3, 2013.
Second. Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs. Add-ons and new business? Item 7, water service request. Item 8, set a date of public hearing?
The move. Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs. Adoption of the agenda?
We adopt the agenda as with the add-ons. Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs. Consent agenda, these items are typically non-controversial. Anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item 1A, to adopt the resolution approving a new memorandum of understanding for cooperative, comprehensive, and continuing transportation planning for the Burlington Graham Metropolitan Planning Organization. B, to award a contract to Carolina Environmental Services Incorporated in an amount of $333,200 to purchase two rear-loading garbage trucks utilizing the Piggyback General Statute 143-129, Budget Amendment 2014-11, recognition of sale of goods that is spelled out in your agenda.
Mayor, before we vote on the consent agenda, I'd like to ask Harold. Harold, would you mind giving the definition of piggyback? I know there's been some questions about that.
I'm gonna let Peggy, our finance lawyer, Peggy Reese, explain that concept. It's an opportunity by state statute that we have in terms of partnering with other agencies on contract and low contract. But Peggy, I'm gonna let you give them the technical definition.
Well, technical, some other organization within the state has been, put the same kind of item out for bid, and then we are allowed by state statute to piggyback onto that, so we don't, that same bid, so that we don't have to rebid the whole thing and go through the whole thing. We're allowed to, especially if our purchasing department has gone out and looked and done research and determined that that is probably the best price available. So that's what piggyback means.
Thank you. In doing so, though, all the state statutes have been met as far as-
Absolutely.
-the bidding process is concerned.
Absolutely.
So there's some certainty there that people have been treated fairly-
Absolutely.
-on that, and you're just able to-
Absolutely.
-avoid the cost involved in-
Absolutely.
Let's help when we review a package that's provided to us before we piggyback, and that includes the bid proposal, the advertisement for bids, and the minutes of the other organization awarding the bids, so we ensure that the bidding statutes were in fact followed.
It's already been vetted to be the lowest-
Yes.
...cost presented at that point in time. Make a motion that we approve the consent agendas written.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs. Thank you. Public hearings, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider citizen comments, be consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for community development program year 2012, 2013. This time, we'd recognize Ms. Shawna Tillery. Welcome, Ms. Tillery.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As we are required for our CDBG and home programs, we must submit to HUD annually our CAPR, which is our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and it details to HUD our accomplishments and objectives that we have met for the year. This report covers the third year of our five-year consolidated plan. Again, tonight, we're looking to receive comments on this. A notice was published on September 10th in the newspaper with a 15-day comment period which will end on the 22nd. That's a requirement that HUD has us do for this end-of-year report. You received a packet, in your packet, a summary of the CAPR detailing our accomplishments for the year. For the record, I'd just like to go over some of those briefly. With our CDBG and home programs, we rehabilitated 12 homeowners' homes. Four of those were at 30% or below the area median income, two at 50% or below the area median income, and six at 80% or below the area median income. We expended $445,919 on housing rehabilitation activities over the last year. We also constructed a new home at the Apple Tree subdivision. That was started in May of 2012 and finished in August of 2012. We trained 17 individuals through the construction training program. We completed the Ireland Street sidewalk project, which was $114,835 to complete that project. We completed five recreation projects. One was for $4,398 to upgrade the lighting at Forest Hill Community Center, $8,650 to put in a building automation controls at North Park, $41,000 to install a new playground at Eva Barker Park. We also received a match of $3,000 from Southland Electric and to construct the picnic shed and $6,450 from New Leaf Society for the shrubbery at that park. We expended $51,430 at the Fairchild Park Community Center to meet state requirements so that could be a full-day preschool center. And then we expended $56,055 to improve the parking lot at the soccer park at Fairchild so that it was no longer gravel and it was asphalt. We did three public facility projects. We expended $3,305 to install a security system at Family Abuse Services, $8,990 to install windows at Residential Treatment Services, I mean, Meven Street Facility, and then $1,250 to install a new handicap curb access at Residential Treatment Services Hall Avenue Facility. We gave $10,000 to the North Park Library. They had over 1,900 children attending programs and over 4,800 people visiting the library over the past year. And we were able to leverage over the past year $93,986.
Questions or comments from Ms. Tillery?
The generator for a child.
That's the next item on the agenda.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Tillery?
Read it.
This is a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak on this topic? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs.
Make a motion that we approve the submission of the CAPR to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number three, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider an amendment to the fiscal year 2010, 2011 Community Development Action Plan. This time, we'd recognize Ms. Tillery again.
This is a proposal, and the reason that it's to the 2010-11 action plan is because that's the furthest year we're going back on reallocating funds. We had several infrastructure projects that came in under budget over the past two and a half, three years, so we're reallocating those funds to a proposed Fairchild Park generator project. That will install a new permanent generator at Fairchild Park Community Center, which is the only Red Cross certified shelter in the county. And then, within this amendment, we're also including $3,000 for our relocation budget. Our home relocation budget has been significantly cut over the past two years, so we're reallocating some money to help with relocating our housing rehabilitation clients. We've already received bids for the generator project, and then this $79,214 includes materials that will have to be with the concrete pad and some other electrical work that will have to be done. So that is what we are proposing within this budget amendment.
Questions or comments from Ms. Tillery?
Are we looking at any other locations to put a certified tenant for a job?
That's not something I could answer, but that could be something that the emergency management director could answer.
That'll allow a Red Cross.
Yeah.
The size of Fairchild was attractive because being two gyms in terms of square footage, shower facilities are there, other rooms that could be set up for various needs, and Jay, you can speak here, too, in that design of that concept, and it's, Sean's comment is the only certified one in the county.
Yeah.
We've been really fortunate the last few years not to have to use that facility. So the generator is really important to that, if that does come into play.
That's correct, and to have some different locations throughout the city based on if certain things happen in areas of the city, that's a good location for us. And it has been set up in the past before, but the generator's a really big thing for that, so that's a great addition to that. They're always looking at facilities, but normally, we would have the facilities, but Red Cross or somebody else would be staffing it. Well, we would have staff there, but essentially, they're the ones operating it. So they kind of guide that through emergency management and Red Cross and stuff as far as the location for other places.
Any other questions, comments from the council? This is a public hearing, anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Move to close the public hearing.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs. Thank you, Ms. Tillery.
You're welcome, and this item will come back for final approval in October.
Okay. Item number four, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider rezoning from R15 Residential District to CO&amp;I Conditional Office Institutional District for the use of the fire station. Use is allowed within the O&amp;I district. The property is located on the east side of Bonner Bridge Parkway, approximately 1,000 feet from University Drive, as shown on Alamance County Tax Map 3-23, and being a portion of Lot 215. This time, we'd recognize Ms. Nelson. Nelson, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm gonna try to pull up some of those maps for you. This is a zoning map, looking at the site in question for the fire station right here off of Bonner Bridge Parkway, near University Drive. Let's see. And there it is on the aerial photo, it's right near Highland Elementary School. These maps are also in your packets, but if you like, I can go over any of those with you. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request for rezoning, as did staff, with the use and development conditions submitted by the petitioner, who is, of course, the city. It is consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that we have for the city, and I believe the fire chief would speak on this matter.
Mayor, all members of council, as you're aware, this is another step in the process of locating a station, a property for Station 6. The Fire Service Study that was conducted had a recommendation for this, as well as discussion with you guys, and you directed us to locate some property. We went through a process, located this particular property. It's gonna work out great for us. It's in a good location, and we think it's a great site. Hopefully, everything's fine with that. Also, if you had additional questions, I brought my attorney with me tonight. If you had anything you need to ask him.
You didn't mention a conflict earlier there.
Sometimes signs don't cooperate all that well.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Nelson? This is a public hearing, so anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Move to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I have a question. In the zoning application, it said the zoning would be effective upon the closing on the property. Is that, should that be part of the motion, or is that-
No, that's, let's make it effective October 1st. Make the effective date of amendment October 1st.
Okay.
That will put it past the closing day, except on the 30th.
Okay. Any other comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs.
Move to approve the rezoning.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs. Statement.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to approve the statement of consistency. The City Council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the city of Burlington Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and that this action is reasonable and is in public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with the existing land use, and will provide adaptive reuse of the property being rezoned.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number five, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider rezoning from O&amp;I Office Institutional District to CO&amp;I Conditional Office Institutional District for the use of insurance agency and all use is allowed within the O&amp;I district. The property is located at 257 south of Graham Hookdale Road, as shown on Alamance County Tax Map 140, block 567, lot 104. This time, I'd recognize Ms. Nelson once again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the maps that's in your agenda packet on this site. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously for approval. Staff approved the request with the use and development conditions that were submitted by the petitioner. It is consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and Mr. Peterson is here to speak on this matter.
Welcome, Mr. Peterson. If you state to the record your name and address, we greatly appreciate you.
John A. Peterson, Jr. Address is 114 Georgetown Drive in Elon. And first of all, I appreciate you considering my requests for the zoning change. Real briefly, the purpose of the change is to add about 1,900 square feet to our existing 2,200 square foot building for the purposes of creating additional office space. The vision is to create a professional space to bring professional services to East Burlington, such as legal services other than criminal law, accounting services other than just basic tax preparation, you know, accounting strategy, CPA-type services that can help people protect and enhance their assets. Same thing, I talked to a lender about placing an LPO, a loan processing office at that location. So we're just trying to bring some professional services to that area, and we're gonna do it using a kind of a quasi-business incubation concept in that we'll provide a lot for those businesses to make sure that they get their sea legs, such as business planning, legal assistance. You know, we attract about 100 people a day to that corner now, so there'll be opportunities for them, for us to help them with referrals, to make sure that they're successful. The only part of the business incubation that we're really not participating in is the request for governmental assistance. You know, we're taking care of that ourselves. So we hope to bring, again, these services to East Burlington and create some viable businesses and going concerns there on that corner.
Questions or comments from Mr. Peterson? Thank you for doing this. Great service, Mr. Peterson. We appreciate it.
Mayor, I have one question. Looking at the zoning application, it says from O&amp;I to conditional plus, you know, O&amp;I. I mean, if you already have O&amp;I, wouldn't you already, I mean, do you have to ask for it in addition to it? In other words, you already have O&amp;I Office Institutional?
There were-
I didn't quite understand that application.
There were some issues with the setbacks due to the size of the addition.
And so, you addressed those issues in the condition?
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, it would not meet the setback with the-
Correct.
Okay. I just found it a little odd that you, if you already have O&amp;I, why would you ask O&amp;I?
Right.
I mean, I got, I mean, I got spin in there because I didn't understand it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This is a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Mayor, make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the rezoning. Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs.
Make a motion that we approve it with a statement of consistency. Statement of consistency. The City Council finds that the above amended amendment is consistent with the city of Burlington Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and that this action is reasonable and is in public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with the existing land uses, and will be, and will provide for an adaptive reuse of the property being rezoned.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, ahs. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could speak to that, that's a little bit unusual in that we have not been doing that in separate motions, but to avoid any confusion with the general statutes, there have been some recent court cases that stress the importance of the records showing that that motion had been adopted, and the planning board department suggested that it be set forth separately. That will be a standard procedure of hereafter.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Nelson. And our new business, item number six, City Council will discuss the potential zoning of property located on the east side of University Drive and the west side of Huffman Lane, approximately 500 feet from South Church Street, as shown on Alamance County Tax Map 3-27, lot 75, 76, 78, and a portion of lot 6.
Mayor, since this is basically my request, then Nelson can take it.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. And that was what I referred to earlier with the, what Mr. Brown's request for his client on the adjoining property here for the conditional commercial use. I was just asking that the property on the corner that had been the subject matter of a previous hearing several years ago also be considered by this council for rezoning from our, I think it's R15, male to O&amp;I use. If you recall, at the meeting, I asked initially whether or not we could tack on the same rezon, with the same conditions, for having certain uses, specifically a gas station, that was being agreed to, my understanding is being agreed to in Mr. Brown's request. And Mr. Peterson noted that that has to be done, of course, with the cooperation and with the request of the owner of the property. And in the alternative, though, without the request of the property owner, we could rezon the property on our own to O&amp;I for some use that does not include by right the gas station. That's the purpose of what my motion is here. These, this is, twice this has come up, and I'm trying to do something here that would try to make this palatable. I don't, haven't, with exception maybe one of us in just talking in general, I don't know that anybody is much in favor of a gas station on this property, on this corner. It did not pass before. In doing so, what I'm trying to do is give some degree of understanding to the folks that live in that neighborhood that this property is going to be developed sometime in the future. It's not there for just to be earth-lubed and holding the other properties together. It is to be developed and will be developed, and the uses that are in O&amp;I would be compatible with what Mr. Brown's suggestions, and we can rezon the adjoining property too, as well as the neighboring residential properties. And that's why O&amp;I, I think, would be a good use for the, we'll go ahead and settle this question for these property owners out in that area that have residences out there that they're concerned about an incompatible use, mainly, I keep hearing, gas station, gas station. It would eliminate that, and let's get that off the table. Obviously, you know, nothing is, it's, nothing's permanent. They can always, even if they rezon O&amp;I, I guess they might come back at some point in time and ask that it be rezoned yet again to accommodate a conditional business use that would include a gas station, but that would require coming back to the City Council at that point in time. Otherwise, it'd be O&amp;I that could develop it however they feel without having to come back to the Council.
Mr. Huggins, I believe, Ms. Nelson, do we have a map outlining that just the area that Mr. Huffman has now referred to?
Yes. And this is-
It says, "Council consideration to rezon to O&amp;I."
I mean, just the corner lot, I think what he's referring to is the changed lot. He's talking about, I'm not mistaken, about the corner lot or not.
Right.
Do we have a map showing that corner lot?
I don't believe we do, other than this.
Okay.
This right here.
It's obvious contiguous, or contiguous with O&amp;I, but it's late.
Mr. Brown, is that, with what you've got, is that a viable map, looking at the corner lot out?
Hmm...I think that that's fairly consistent with the request. I believe what Ms. Nelson has done is a black line, the area that is the Collins property, and then the Hilliard Kazaya entity owns three parcels. The only portion of the Hilliard Kazaya property that is in the Whitecliff Investments request, that will be back before you in October pursuant to Mr. Huffman's motion to set it for October. There's only a small portion of the Hilliard Kazaya property that's included. I have several other things I'd like to talk about, but I will at the appropriate time, Mayor, when you ask for-
Well, I think that you're probably up here already, so I think you probably need to just move forward with your conversation.
This, you know, I've been doing this a long time. I mean, approximately all 38 years. I don't recall any time in the history of this town that the City Council has told my client, or one of your friends, or one of your neighbors, that we're going to rezon your property. I think this is a very dangerous precedent. I think the council will be interjecting itself into the marketplace. Historically, zoning decisions have been broad-brush, land use plan that y'all all have approved, vetted over months and years sometimes, and then specific requests come to you for that. So, I think it's a very dangerous precedent for you as a council to say, "Hilliard Kazaya, we're going to rezon your property." Specifically, when that request came back, it came before you years ago, it was part of about 15 acres of property that had very specific mixed uses, very specific conditions. It did not pass. And so, since that time, Mr. Collins has decided that he needs to move his property, and so, Whitecliff has got it under contract and has agreed with the Hilliard Kazaya, to the extent that the Hilliard Kazaya property is across the street from the stoplight and will be completed, and that's why the Hilliard Kazaya property is even involved in this at all. So, I think it's a dangerous precedent. Clearly, the state statute and the city code require specific due process, and that means this request, just like the one tonight, for the city to initiate on the fire station property that it has under contract, has to go to the Planning Commission, and then has to come before you after being obviously vetted by the staff. I've been working with the staff, and my clients have been working with the staff for about nine months on this very specific request on the Collins property that involves a little of the Hilliard Kazaya. Quite frankly, I was shocked when Mr. Huffman made this an agenda item at the tail end of the last meeting without telling me, without any notice to my client. I still have gotten no notice, official notice, from the city, and thank goodness, staff called me and said, "Well, Mr. Huffman's asked that the whole area be zoned O&amp;I, because that's what it looked like." I went back and looked at the movie of you guys, and it certainly appeared to me that that was the case. Since we were here four or five years ago on the Hilliard Kazaya property that has two ponds on it, that the little notch that you see there is the waterway under University Drive, a substantial amount of work has gone into an application to the United States Government that goes through the U.S. Corps of Engineers to reshape that stream, to restore it to a blue stream status. And part of that condition, that's not something I'm handling. Brooks, Pierce, McClendon, Huffman, Leonard, the specialists in that office have been working on that for about 12 months. The application process that's in place requires that there be no development contiguous to this blue stream area. So, it's going to be a while, assuming that the blue stream area is approved by the Corps and that all the construction is done. It's going to be a while before this, the property owner, my client, will bring back the corner property, if you will, before you. And I was warned very specifically by the attorneys that deal in this area, that the application's been made for a blue stream restoration that can't include commercial development. And so, we're not going to be back on that for quite some time. So, I think it would be premature, and it would be at odds with what the federal environmental statutes contemplate and what the state statutes contemplate. My third point is that if and when this property's going to be used for anything but R15, it's got to come back before you. If it never comes back, it will never be considered. I think this muddles the water on the request that is going extensively reviewed by staff, that we have coming before you next month, and I think that it really seriously clouds the issue. I think it was very instructive that John Peterson brought before you a site-specific plan, just as we had done on the 16 acres earlier, that, and our request on the six acres is very specific. It's conditional uses, conditions that the property owners put on here. Mr. Ward knows, all of you know, but Mr. Ward and Mr. Bateman and I know very well. You couldn't have contract zoning before the state statute allowed conditional zoning. Is that good for the cities? Yes, because you get to see what you get. The staff can suggest and recommend conditions. You can suggest and recommend conditions, and the property owner can put them in there. To zone this O&amp;I would be inconsistent with what y'all generally do, which is walt conditional zoning with specific conditions on it. It just seems to me that it, in addition to setting a bad precedent, that it really has taken, it will take an unnecessary amount of time, y'all's time, staff time, my client's time, energy, focus, and quite frankly, money, because time is money. And when you've got your staff going through the things that they go through to bring you what they, what you have requested, that it is a tremendous amount of wasted time and effort on something that may never come before you. Again, I think it's a dangerous slope that you're looking at, and I would encourage you not to consider the Hilliard Kazaya property that's on the corner for office and institutional zoning, but to allow us to come back with a specific plan if and when all the environmental approvals have been granted, all the environmental work has been done, and all the environmental work has been approved by the appropriate federal and state authorities. And so, that is where my clients find themselves, and I feel professionally and personally very strongly about our position on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Comments from council?
Mayor, I've got just one comment. I've got one question first. I mean, in looking at this thing also, if we change this zoning, if it was an action that we, if it was a path we went down, that would be adverse to our Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Is that not correct, Harold?
It's presently done, it's presently residential, and the request is go to O&amp;I. The request, I believe, Mr. Brown, for your property adjacent is conditional O&amp;I and conditional business. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, the argument could be made that it could go both ways there, Jim. I mean, it's presently zoned R15.
I mean, any change is going to be adverse to what's in existence now, unless it stays under its current plan. And I understand exactly what Mayor Pro Tim Huffman was trying to accomplish here, because that's been a very contentious corner. But I do have deep sympathies for the property owner and Lawson's group because of the work and the effort that they've put in. And I do think that it may be a point that really has no ultimate purpose for the simple fact that that's not the property in question. And I do understand we need to get some clarity on what can be done with that property, and I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Huffman 100%. However, it's just not in question. It's not in play right now. And I do think that it does muddy the water a little bit on this other property and what they're currently trying to do. I, for one, would like to just let this thing play out at its current path, and we'll make decisions on conditional use as they come before us.
Any other comments from council?
I have a question about it. You know, Mr. Huffman, just in terms of the procedural posture, you know, maybe he hadn't, maybe I don't totally understand his request, but his request, it'd have to go back to P&amp;Z, wouldn't it?
Right.
And so, the P&amp;Z, quite frankly, I mean, if you, if you do that, P&amp;Z can weigh in on it, right?
That was the purpose.
And is that your purpose, to get them to weigh in? So, in other words, if it went back, they could recommend O&amp;I, or they could recommend, or denial of O&amp;I, period. I mean, yours, I guess, it has a substantive element here, obviously, but here at this point, it's more of a procedural question as to whether or not to go back or just leave it lying. Maybe you can explain further.
Well, no, I, Bob, I appreciate it. I just want to think, I'm gonna say what I believe's happening here, is that the staff, two and a half years ago, three years ago, was trying to get a gas station put in on the corner, and now the idea is, I think, to come back in and have the adjoining property zoned commercial, conditioned as it is, and then obviously come back to this and bring this back up again for straight commercial, which would include a gas station, okay? And then the argument there is somewhere along the same lines as the domino theory, look, you've already got this in commercial property, it's conditioned, but it's commercial, and this is one step further away from it, and, you know, it's okay, I think we can do this. And these folks are going to be, will be fighting the same battle again at that point in time. So, I was simply trying to go ahead and flush out what I think is going to be the process here. And, you know, if this council doesn't want to do that, that's fine. I understand that. I'm not losing any sleep. I heard one's already up. But I think we owe it, when we can, to put some sort of finality to the matter, give some people some guidance, rather than keep people stirred up out in the neighborhood. So, I think it'd be kind of right to do that.
I mean, I agree.
I agree 100% that the residents out there needs to have, they need to have some understanding of what our intentions are, and the developers that are interested in that property need to have some idea of what our intentions are. But as a side matter, even before, when this project was much larger, when it came before us several years ago, I think it was approved from P&amp;Z at that time, was it not? I can't recall, but-
It was not?
It was.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. So, and I agree with regards to Mayor Pro Tim Huffman's comments there. It just seems like that, I mean, I take Lawson for his word, and he sits here and says that they got a purpose for that corner, and it's under a restoration program, and, you know, it's just, it really puts a cloud on the project that I don't think is, doesn't benefit anyone, is my concern.
I just can't imagine that Mr. Brown, his client, would come back with a gas station on that corner. I can't imagine.
Plus with the street-
I don't think that, I mean, that, it's the weather. Will come back with, or my client or somebody else's client will come back with that request at some time in the future. I don't know that either. Is it a likely spot? Yes, it is.
Sure.
Certain members of this council have voted against every gas station that I've ever seen come before you. So, I don't know the reticence there, but, you know, we had a shot at it, or my clients did, four years ago, got the consent to the extent we could of the most affected neighbor on the corner, which was Twin Lakes Community, that at that time had residential units planned along Church Street. That's no longer the master plan. Having brought that before you on their behalf, they're now proposing offices immediately across the street. So, it didn't pass then. Will it pass again? Who knows? Who knows? I don't have any idea. It's premature to consider it in my estimation for the reasons I articulated. And we've got a lot of environmental on the Nationwide 27, which is a buzzword that the environmental lawyers use that I don't really have any familiarity with.
You know, if there's a stream in that area and the way Dina operates, it's going to be tough to put a gas station on that corner anyway. I feel like it would be.
Same stream was there last night.
Yeah, but I mean, probably the rules are a little tougher now.
Any other comments? Not. And I hear no motions, I'm moving on to item number seven. Thank you. City Council will consider supplying water service to 159 West Old Glen Cove Road. This time I recognize Mr. Schaffner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'll pull up a map. As you may recall from, this is a follow-up from last evening's work session, there's been a water request for, well, a request for water at 159 West Old Glen Cove Road, just north of Burlington. The applicant has filled out and completed our utility agreement and annexation petition as required. However, this parcel is not eligible for annexation due to it being a satellite parcel, which does not meet all the statutory requirements for satellite annexation because there is no sewer available. Therefore, we cannot provide all our services. However, this is urgent need on behalf of the applicant due to poor water quality in their well. And I'd like to recognize John Cantley, the applicant, if you have any questions. And if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments to Mr. Schaffner?
I think after what we heard last night, there's no question in my mind to give water.
Well, you know, what we would do, Daniel, we've got the agreement, we would go ahead and keep the agreement. So any time within a 21-year period, if it became feasible, the city could require annexation, right? Or if it qualified, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So we're not, we're not doing away with the annexation. It's in effect, waiting until it's ripe, so to speak, you know, and we don't know. We really don't know what 21 years is going to bring. And I'd like to think I'd be around here 20 years, 21 years now. I don't know that that's going to be the case. But anyway, 21 years is a good little chunk of time, you know, to let things line up. So back to you, Mr. Fossey.
I move we approve a request for water. This is a property at 159 West Old Glen Cove Road.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, Mr. Schaffner.
Thank you.
Item number eight, City Council will consider setting a date of public hearing, receive public comments modifying the city charter and reference to potentially expanded city council seats.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I want to, you know, last night, it went a little longer probably than everybody wanted to do. But I would like to, I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing, and at least there's some consensus that to get it beyond, you know, the current election. So the first meeting in January is what I heard would be, well, a consensus time, and I'd make that motion that, you know, that we receive citizen input on the, you know, potentially increase in city council seats at that time. And that's all I have to say about it. I'm not going to go back over the litany of things we covered last night.
Any more motion?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Brings us to public comment, period. And then we have Alex Alfera?
Alfonso.
Alfonso. Could you state your name and address, please?
Hello, my name is Alex Alfonso. I live at 810 High Street here in Burlington. I want to talk about public transportation, and I want to tell you my own story, hoping that it'll impart why this issue is so personal to me, and also I venture to say to a lot of other people in this county. I moved here roughly two years ago to Alamance County. I was living in Meben at the time, and I lived with my girlfriend and her young son. We were sharing a car at the time. When our schedules become more diverse and I got a job here in Burlington, I needed to buy a car to get here. If there was public transportation or a bus system, which I understand the plan for public transportation would connect Meben, Graham, Gibsonville to Burlington, I could have saved, I venture to say, $2,000 to $4,000 that year. I'm talking about buying the car, insurance, repairs, tickets, anything like that. When I look at it that way, and then you think about, I've found that my situation is never unique. So I'm going to also say that, you know, there's hundreds of people, I would say, in my situation that could benefit that much from public transportation. I know that might not be a lot of money to some of the people on this board, but it's definitely a lot of money to someone in my situation. And also people that are, you know, have it harder than I do. I'm not on disability, I don't get any kind of government assistance, I'm obviously not a senior, and, you know, I don't have any problem getting around now, but for those that would, you know, they're often stigmatized over this issue of public transportation, and maybe that's why there hasn't been too much movement on this, even though you guys have had the chance to put this in place for a long time now. But I would ask you to consider how much money we could save if all those people were saving that much money by riding public transportation. Not only that, but the money that you extended to the Sheets Corporation, which is bringing jobs into the county, and Kaiser Roth over the four years, I think the initial payment to Sheets just to send sewer lines out there was enough to establish public transportation here in the city. Also, you think about downtown events, you got the barbecue coming up here, you got the Co-op Festival, and you've got the Fourth Fridays that are here in downtown. It would be nice if locals could take the bus downtown and have a few beers, and then also take it back home without having to fear a DUI or something like that, or some other kind of repercussion, because they want to spend money and have fun down here in Burlington. And I think maybe why this situation hasn't progressed more is, you know, maybe you all need to educate yourself a little bit more on this. Mr. Huffman, at the last work session where public transportation was on the agenda, you had to ask what the vehicle registration tax was. This is after the previous work session, Mr. Wall asked the same question and was answered in detail. So I would ask you at the least to pay attention when these things come up. Mr. Butler, when I asked you about it, there was one thing you said that we needed an exit strategy for this, just in case it doesn't work out. And I think that was the only difference in the presentation from Mike Nun of the Municipal Planning Organization from the two work sessions, was that he answered your question as, well, basically you get your 10 percent match back, which is about $200,000 with the vehicle registration tax. Now, $200,000 that you all would invest for a project that would cost $5 to $6 million if you didn't have these matching grants, I think is a hell of an investment for the city.
30 seconds.
So I think you've, all out of excuses on this, I know the money's there, I know the need is there, and it would be nice if someone here or the board showed the political will and someone on this board exhibited the sand to champion this issue, and instead of having it be just budget or election time idle talk and lip service, to have something of reality. You have a chance to comment on any of my criticisms, and if you have any new excuses, I would love to hear them so I can come back next meeting and shoot those down. Thank you.
Get to the city council comments. Next week, two community meetings will be held, this Thursday, September 19th, at the Cronotus Singerson, starting at 7:00 p.m. The following Thursday, September 26th, at Turntown Middle School. U.S. and North Carolina flags being flown at half-staffed day through sunset, September 20th, tribute to the victims of the shootings at the Washington Naval Yard. Thoughts and prayers with victims and their families. Free e-waste and paper shedding shredding event, September 21st, Public Works Department, Test 234, East Summit Avenue, Burlington Carousel Festival, September 21st, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00, and Sunday, September 22nd, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Any other comments? Not, we're going to turn a motion to adjourn. I move.